Let's rise for our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the nation of America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Board members, with Mr. Steppich not being here, we need someone to step in. Heather?
Yeah.
You're willing to do that?
I am willing.
All right, Heather, then you will be... Would you do attendance?
You betcha. President Bailey?
I'm here.
Vice President Brazington?
Here.
Secretary Steppich? President Guthrie? Here. Trustee Bailey? Trustee Delgado?
Here.
Trustee Shaver? Here.
Thank you very much. Any changes to the orgative?
No.
Our consent agenda, the minutes from March 20th. We have a motion. Dan?
Who approved the consent agenda as presented?
Support. Jenny? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Prearranged request. We have middle school web leaders. Yes?
Hi!
Hello!
Welcome to Oxley Middle School. We're gonna get you out of your comfort zone a little bit tonight and actually take you out of your chairs. We have a presentation by our eighth grade choir that we're all gonna go down to the choir room to begin with, and then when we get back, our web leaders will take over.
Awesome.
So, if we could leave your fruit in front of you. We'll be back for that shortly. Tonight, we have our Board of Education and our central office administrators and also some special guests here to hear you. And I wanted to turn this over to Mrs. Flynn, our choir teacher. We've had... We're really proud of the entire music program that we have here at OMS. It is a true family with our orchestra, our band, our drummers, and our singers. And Mrs. Flynn has really led those efforts here in our building with our staff. And so, it's been a great year for the choir, and I'm gonna let her break a little bit about her.
Thank you, Mrs. Beasley. It's good to see you all. Welcome. It's good to have you here. This is the eighth grade concert choir. So normally, we have 55 students, and I would say probably... We haven't counted, but most of them are here tonight. So we just had the exciting opportunity to go to what's called Choral Festival, which is an annual activity where we go to Sports Creek, and the students are given an opportunity to sing for a panel of judges. And then the judges have a sophisticated rubric that they work with, and they add up the points. And this year, we had a very high district or Level 1. And I think also, would you guys agree that we're really happy with our site reading score?
Yes.
Yeah, we... The site reading score this year came in at 30 out of 30. So we're...
Oh!
So tonight, we've prepared two pieces. When we go to festival, it's adjudicated by the Michigan School of Vocal Music Association, or sometimes known as MSVMA. And we picked two songs. And this year, the students and I co-created this, and we collaborated on two foreign language pieces. The first one is German, and the second one is French. So the first one is written by Johann Sebastian Bach. And he wrote this many years ago, and it's called "Bist du bei mir"? It's "Be near to me." Of course, Bach had 20 kids, and so he had an incentive to keep writing music. But much of his music was highly regarded and still is to this day. And the second piece is a different kind of style. It's called "Jean-Ton de Moulin," and it's French, and it's more playful, and it has some light moments to it. So please enjoy. We're gonna sing for you "Bist du bei mir" and then "Jean-Ton de Moulin." Thank you so much. That's so lovely. The translation for "Jean-Ton de Moulin" is "I hear the windmills." So in the piece, you might hear a little bit of what is kind of like the wooden clatter of the old windmills going around and around. And you'll hear that in some of the parts of the music.
I hear the windmill, taka-taka. 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 I've got a hand, a fine house built, taka-taka. I hear the windmill, taka-taka. La-la-la, la-la-la, la-la-la. La-la-la, la-la-la, la-la-la. The carpenters came to build our house, taka-taka. Jean-Ton de Moulin, taka-taka. La-la-la, la-la-la, la-la-la. La-la-la, la-la-la, la-la-la. Jean-Ton de Moulin, taka-taka. Jean-Ton de Moulin, taka-taka. Jean-Ton de Moulin, taka-taka. Jean-Ton de Moulin!
Do you understand any of the French in this piece?
Oh, yeah.
I just wonder how many schools that go to festival perform in different languages?
Yes.
Like, were you wondering that too, Jenny?
That's my same question.
How many of our... Would you know that?
I don't know that, but this was a challenge for us to try two different languages. And do you guys remember when we did the German, how he was saying that even when we pronounced the word "hand"? It's not "panda." He was giving us some fine points on the pronunciation. And they did make a comment that "In French, you have to talk." So we had to keep talking in this way. So they gave us some really helpful pointers. I'm so proud of you guys.
Yes, really good.
Yes, so I'm gonna take some of your... The students that are involved in the web activity.
There are some presenters, right?
Yeah. So we're gonna take you down to the media center. And again, thank you for going on this little field trip with us. I'm really proud of all the acres and acres. I want you to know... Mr. Card, could you stay here for just a moment? I want you to know, this is Mr. Card. He happens to be here for another reason at the board meeting, but Mr. Card is our high school choir teacher.
Next year.
So how awesome is that for him to be able to hear you tonight? You have a lot of grace. Thanks. Great job.
And we're gonna show you some activities that we do with our sixth graders to teach them about how to handle certain situations. I'm gonna head this off to my friend Sam to start this.
Hello. So we're gonna do a little activity. So can I please have volunteer? Mr. Guthrie, would you like to volunteer?
I'll come that way? Okay. I don't know, it's been a while.
It's been a while.
Put this on?
Yeah.
All right, let's see if it fits.
Okay, so in art, can you please do five jumping jacks? Touch toes three times. Turn around once, and do five more jumping jacks.
Okay, talk me through this. Five jumping jacks. One, two, three, four, five. And touch my toes. Really? Two. Five times. Three. Five on my knees.
Okay, now.
I can do that.
Now, five more jumping jacks.
All right. Four and five. Right?
So would you think it was hard to do that?
Yes.
Do you really feel bad for doing the exercises?
No, it was just kind of fun. But it wasn't... Wasn't too terribly.
I'm gonna hang this over.
Thanks, Sam.
You're welcome.
Thanks a lot, Sam.
So when you're at work, when you're at school, like you can be called like some negative names or get some put downs. Like, what are some examples of those?
Jerk.
What else?
Stupid.
Stupid?
Shorty.
Shorty?
Crazy?
So we're gonna put these in her backpack because these are what are loading her down at work and in school, 'cause everyone calls for this. Two more.
Fatty.
Blondie.
That's even hard for me. My mom does make fun of me. She's a blonde. That's even harder.
Okay, so now, we're gonna do the same activity Sam gave you.
Do you think... Is this school every day? This is second.
Yeah. Seventy-five jumping jacks.
What? Did you say seventy-five? You're gonna have to go manual.
Okay, let's see if I can do it. One. You can do it. Two. Three. Four. Five. No, touch your toes three times. It does my knees a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
One.
I'm cheating. There is no way you can do this with just on your back. Do you guys do this when you come to school with all these in your backpacks?
Yeah. Three, I did three.
Okay, turn around once. Five more jumping jacks.
No! One, two, three. Oh, I'm getting really tired. This is hard. This is hard.
So was it harder with all the negative words and doubts in your backpack?
Absolutely harder.
Okay, I'm gonna hand...
Good awareness for me.
I'm gonna hand this off to Emily and Jayden.
Did I mean to hand this off? Yeah, you did. I... Time to suggest you take it off. Oh, let's get it off! Damn! New lifesaver. Water.
Thank you! So sit down.
Yeah. Yeah. Do you... My throat is really going.
Get some water.
I'm good. Yeah, we got some. Sorry. Words are difficult. Thank you.
No worries. It's that time of year.
Do you think doing what you just did with the backpack is how some people might feel when they're at work or school? Like they're being weighed down by...
Yes, I do. I think that's a really good translation. It does feel that way. Do you guys feel that way?
Since you were the volunteer to put on the backpack and those heavy words, what did it feel like? What... How did it like... Describe how it felt to wear those and like negative words.
Well, it felt uncomfortable. So I think the first thing is really just uncomfortable. It felt sort of like I was different. And maybe... I mean, definitely felt heavy, cumbersome. I wanted to shake it off, but couldn't, right? So like that was the demand. What else? Were there other good words? Good, negative words? Actually, like, I can imagine... Because it's the most exercise I've had in a long time. I'm a little confused. Like, you know, just why is this happening? Kind of thing, right? So really, more and more and more weight. And tested. Probably that's another good one. Very tested, challenged. And not in a good way.
I'm embarrassed to...
Embarrassed to go in. Like I'm being scrutinized?
Yes, scrutinized. Everybody's watching you to see.
'Cause I'm different, I guess. Yeah, that's exactly right.
Have you guys ever felt like that at work or maybe school, when you were in school or in any sort of situation where because of the way somebody was treating you or something that has been said to you that you felt like you were being... You were being treated differently and like you were weighed down and you couldn't really do whatever task was at hand that may have been easy beforehand?
And sometimes, it's like you don't take necessarily the names or the actual weight, but you can almost feel it, like, right? It's understood. It's... You feel like an outcast.
It's really good words to describe that. Why do we put negative words and labels on people? Why do we call them such biased names that we just put them on them? And this one's for all of you guys, not just... Right. Like they're objects. Like blondie. Like, you can just call anyone who's blonde a blondie. Why do we do that?
I think some people think that by putting somebody else down, it lifts themselves up.
That's a good one. Are there any other reasons you think that somebody could do something like that to another person?
Maybe to get the attention off themselves and to put it on somebody else.
Just to blame something or just shift focus?
Focus, yeah. Shift the focus on someone else. Maybe because they're uncomfortable too, and they don't know how to handle it. Or they're jealous of them. You know, a lot of times, it's something... It's an actual, like, it's something that they envy of them. They're kind of jealous. Yeah, like my blonde hair.
Exactly. Why were you blonde hair? Okay. There's one more question?
Okay.
Yes, sorry. What effect does it have on people when they're called those names or when they're treated differently like that? People who are being called it. Outcasted. Outcasted, right. Yeah, when they're being outcasted, what does it feel like? What kind of effect does it have? Maybe beyond just the moment that's happening?
Lower your confidence.
Lower your confidence. What is like a sort of more long-term effect you have on you?
It can make you sick.
Sick.
Lonely.
Make you feel lonely. Nobody on this side of the team is really sick, do you guys?
You're doing such a good job. All right, I think really, when you go through that day after day after day, it wears on you. And more so, more often than not, you're being called a name over and over and over again. You take on that persona. You take on that, "I don't have any work." And when in all actuality, it's Superintendent Throne said it's just somebody else really trying to make themselves feel better about themselves, picking on somebody that really doesn't have those qualities that everybody's describing.
See, you guys should talk more. You guys are... You're good at this. Okay, so now, we're passing it off to Andrew.
Okay. So I'm Andrew, and there are plenty of bad things you can say to people. And those bad things can wear people down. But one thing that can bring people up is saying some good things about people. What are some good things that you think that we can say to people?
You're nice.
You're nice. That's a really good one.
Fun to be around.
Fun to be around. Mr. Weaver, what would you like to say?
Uh, you're very intelligent.
Very intelligent.
You're a good friend.
Good friend. These are all great things to say. And as I've noticed with a few of you when you guys were talking, you were smiling a little bit more. And that's something that we should all do. And we should all just compliment more people and be a little happier. Because it's such a great thing. I'm gonna pass it off to Zoe right now to... Yeah.
So it's obviously better to get positive comments than negative comments. And it can... By getting more positive comments, it can easily make your life so much easier in school, work, or just everyday life. So now, we're going to pass this off to our next activity.
So that's exactly what we're gonna do. So Hannah's gonna pass out note cards to everyone. And we're gonna write such things as positive things to the person next to you. So like the person next to you can be your partner. So like you two, you two, you two, you two, you two. That makes sense. So you're gonna write one positive thing or multiple if you want to. Doesn't have to be like a physical thing. It can be like personality-wise or anything like that.
About the person next to us?
It'd be easier.
One thing?
As many things as you want. Whatever you want. Whatever your heart desires. I imagine after you meet people for a long time, you have at least a couple of positive things you say about each other.
That's right.
At least two, maybe.
So once everyone's done, you're gonna give a person your partner, your partner. And I want you guys to take it off and wear it on your shirt for those tier board meetings. Or...
Wear it home.
Yeah. You can print it and you can just hang it on your wall. Would you guys like to share a couple of what people sent? Don't take it off.
There's so many there.
I'll share. Nancy said I had beautiful red hair, and I said to Nancy, "Nice hair." She said, "Great smile, inspiring, funny, compassionate, warm." That's good stuff. I know, lots of that. And more. My partnership, that I'm extremely positive. I always wanna help people and/or causes, and I want everyone included, and I'm kind, which is... That means the world to me. Thank you. Those are good things to me. Thank you.
President Donnelly said to me, "Kind, honest, driven, integrity."
Nice.
Thank you.
Superintendent Throne said that I am an encourager, compassionate, servant-hearted, positive attitude. Thank you.
Dan said I was a good leader.
Joyce didn't say this, but I'm not a good listener.
You're breaking everyone. Do you wanna add to my...
Here, give it back to him. Make him work it.
No, no, I can do that backpack.
Positive. Positive.
Joyce put dedicated, compassionate. I liked it. Nancy said, "Ken, you have great hair." And he said the same thing. Joking.
Where's that backpack?
Ken said that I am great with math.
But you have good hair!
And Sam put down smart that he was missing a few letters.
Extremely? I'll scratch you two letters.
As you all can see, it's a lot better to be nice to people 'cause we shared a lot of laughs and it was a more positive environment, I think, for everybody. And it would make the world a better place if we were all like this more often towards one another.
Yeah, it would.
And thank you all for listening to our...
Thank you for coming. Great.
Great job.
Good job, you guys.
Thank you! Good luck with the senior board meeting.
So we're really proud of a lot of people and a lot of programs here at OMS. And tonight, we're just a few. I know I discuss more than my allotted time, but you know when you come to OMS to expect the unexpected. You know that if you've been on the board for a couple of years or you've been here. I just thank you for participating with us. And just know that the lessons, this lesson that the web leaders did with you, they work with our sixth graders once a month. So they're part of the web leader program that transitioned from fifth grade to sixth grade, but it's a program that continues on all year long. And these are the types of things that we're teaching each other. And so, kids hear it from their parents. They hear it from the adults that work with them, but they also are hearing positive messages from their peers and the students that they look up to. And middle school's hard. And I think if we all remember back to our middle school years, we can probably have a story or two. And we're just trying to make this a successful place for students to learn and for people to work. And we've got great people here that are helping us do that. And so, I would like to thank Mrs. Flynn, who's down in the choir room, but also Mr. Smolkowitz, who is our web leader coordinator. And some of you may know, Mr. Smokey this year was applied to the Boomerang Project, which he is now a national trainer for adults in the nation to provide web leader training to their schools. So we're really proud of a lot of, like I said, a lot of people in here at this building. It is M-Step time, so don't worry. We are very much concentrating on our testing this week and next week and for the next month. But we try to have a little fun here too, and do it in a very kind way. So thanks again for being here and seeing us.
Thank you. You guys rock!
We do. Thank you!
Great T-shirts, by the way.
Yeah, love it.
Oh, yes. Nice t-shirts. Thank you.
Note, we need to have more exciting board meetings. That's true. All right. Board of Education Matters, we have a field trip request.
Yes. So I'm here to present to you a proposal for our class to perform in Ireland in 2019. We've been invited to perform as part of a concept series in Ireland where it's the Americans, celebration of American music in Ireland. This is where college music groups, professional music groups, or advanced high school choirs like ourselves are invited to perform different cities around Ireland and throughout the course of the year. And we've been selected to perform there. There's gonna be three performances we would do in Ireland. It's 2013, we were there, did this concept series, and it was really, really exciting to be able to take part in this. And it was neat to get the feedback from the towns where we visited where they said, "This is one of the best music groups and I'm part of this, this concept series." And that was really warm fuzzies to hear that and the students went away with a great experience with that. Love Ireland for a destination for performance. For our kids, it's a very safe country economically speaking. They're desperate to have people come visit their island, so the prices are really, really great. I really like that, the value for traveling internationally and having that experience. Having it be mostly English language there, there's quite the accent when we're over there, but the kids can talk to people in those communities and such. So, and I love the history that's involved in Ireland. The fact that they can go and see buildings that aren't just like 200 or 300 years old, but are 1,000 years old and still standing, that's really, really an incredible experience. And the venues that they're able to perform in there, like St. Patrick's Cathedral, that have been standing for so many years, the acoustics are so beautiful. So it's a phenomenal opportunity. We're really excited that we're invited to take part in this. There's a packet of details in your board, a packet there you can look through. I'm here to just address it and see if there's any questions, because there's a lot of details involved. And I just want you to be comfortable about what you would be deciding on if you take part in it. So would there be any questions that you can see from that?
Need any non-vocal chaperones?
We are covered. We are covered. But if you wanna sing bass, we can help you. How about that?
Where are you getting, you're seeing 10 adults going. Is he from the, are they parents, are they teachers?
Parents.
Interesting. Very good. And how do you guys, do you ever share information with the travel club? Like, do you guys work with Mr. Trotter and Mrs. Blazek to try to do things in a similar way or share the experience?
When you have a performance tour, it is different.
It's totally different.
It's different. So you'll do a lot of the sightseeing stuff, but you know, there's some academic things they might do where we would do a kind of different activity. I think anytime you travel internationally, you can learn from each other and experience and, you know, how to take care of stuff and things.
For sure. Forty-five students, though. That is a lot of students to take.
It's a big group, for sure. Yeah, I didn't expect this kind of commitment at this point. Normally, we pitch it, 100 people are excited about it, and 23 go, kind of thing. So there's just a lot of, again, I think the price is right here. As you can see in the packet, I gave you the proposals. I was pretty darn aggressive on these companies saying, "Hey, so-and-so's giving us this price, so-and-so's giving..." And just had them go back and forth. And so in 2013, we did this cost for $3,000 a person. We've got the best at a 25 and change on this. So what, what is it, seven years later, we're doing it for less with, quite frankly, more opportunities that we've got. And the students are gonna be doing some stuff this time around they didn't do last time. So excited about that.
Dan?
Um, are you comfortable with that many kids, 10, being the right amount of chaperones? Oh, good mix for you.
Yeah, that's like, what, one to five ratio? I feel real good about that.
Okay.
Yeah. Good question, thanks. And they're, and they're great, by the way. The chaperones that we have are great. So my accomplice will be going. We've got a teacher, some business folks, we've got a doctor, MD, going with us. So I mean, this is a very, I'm loving the chaperone group. This is a...
Do you need a pastor? Just in case.
Just saying. And he's Irish.
Yes!
Donnelly.
A pastor, bass, Irish guy.
You got it. You got it.
If somebody drops out...
If somebody gets sick.
You're in. You are in.
How many times will you perform the week that you're there? Do you know?
Yeah, so we're gonna do three performances for communities, and I believe those are in there. And we're also, and I'm really excited about this one, we didn't do it last time, we're gonna do exchange on that Friday in one of the Irish schools, which I think is gonna be one of the best things that we'll do. So for the kids to do some of our music, we'll share. We're still working on details on what that might look like, but where we sing together, sing for each other, and for their student body. I just think that's gonna be priceless, you know, having that opportunity. Oh, we get footage, yeah. And we do a blog usually, we'll, every day we'll post stuff up there and things.
Are you locked into those days as far as trying to go like over a school break versus missing the six days or something?
It's been calculated. February's a great time to go because it's off-season for travel, so our airfare's a lot lower. Everything goes down at that point. There's things in our school, like the musical that we're trying to get, and kind of the middle of that period, past exams. So we're like sliced in, where is a time that's safe to go, kind of thing? And we wanna maximize a weekend there, so...
So it works with the school schedule?
It's about the best we can do. It's a lot of time on, but...
Any other questions? What a great opportunity.
We're excited.
Very exciting.
Thank you, thank you.
Fun.
If anything comes up, just let me know.
Yes.
Happy to address that. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
All right, next item is the Michigan Competency Consortium.
Yes, so in your packet was a resolution. And basically, just, I wanna make a quick word on this. So this is the group of, of schools that we've been working together for over a year now. And we had submitted to the Michigan Innovation Group at the state and the state superintendent. And so I guess what I want you to know is that there is some activity going on right now at the state level in regards to assessment. And so what does this mean for us? Basically, what it means for us is even though we're asking you to adopt this and we believe this, it doesn't lock us into doing anything we don't want to or not changing down the road when it comes to assessments. Really, all of the districts are being asked to, to have their boards accept this resolution just to tell the state that, that we're serious about the application that we submitted and that we do really wanna work towards better assessments for our students. And so I just, I just wanna be open and let you know that there is some fluidity here and that depending upon some actions the state may or may not take will, will impact how much we really are involved or the degree of involvement that we have when it comes to creating our own custom assessments. So still very much in favor of it. We still wanna pursue it. I just wanna let you know that, that we're not locked into anything and there still could be some, some movement as we go forward.
So this is about like, kinda how we get assessed as a, as a district by the state?
Yeah, so this, this is really a proposal...
Or how the kids get... The kids or us? Like, is it a whole district?
Both.
Or the kids' scores?
Both. So it's a proposal to create and provide some alternative, alternative assessments rather than maybe just the M-Step.
Okay. Would it be an additional test that the kids would have to like?
It may, but it may not. It may be interwoven.
Okay.
And so that's a part of that fluidity that I talked about in that, you know, in talking with Ken, there's some really good reasons why we wanna do this, because we, we do think that there's better ways of assessing our kids. At the same time, though, we do wanna keep our pulse on how our students are doing in relative comparison to students across the state.
Right.
We don't wanna just give up everything from a state perspective because you get two or three down, two, two or three years down the road. How do we know if our students are getting better comparatively? And so, um, yeah, so there's, it could be instead of, it could be both. We're really not sure yet. Good question.
It is more student, student evaluation-based, not like, basically based on how your district's doing or anything like that?
All student assessments. Ken, did I say that right? Is there anything you'd like to add?
No, the, the assessments would be more performance-based, not a standardized, multiple-choice test. But like Mr. Throne said, we're also, like, right now, trying to put a foot in each camp, so to speak, because the state is in the process of shifting some of the assessments, the interim benchmark assessment. We also think would be very beneficial. So we're trying to look at both. It's just, quite honestly, the M-Step, the validity of it, for all the grades, three to eight, is not extremely well followed. So if you recall, this was brought to us at our last meeting, right?
Yeah.
In the discussion about the ineffectiveness of the M-Step and some of its features. And so the group of superintendents wanting to get the state to maybe hear a voice. And so this is our opportunity to, to join in on that. Does someone wanna share a motion? Ms. Shaefer?
Move to approve the resolution regarding Michigan competency consortium membership as presented.
Is there support? Ms. Guthrie? Any, any more discussion?
Yes, we're not exempting out of the M-Step. Not at this point. And by passing this resolution, does it give you the ability to do that at some point in the future?
It could. We haven't received official feedback from the state as far as what all they're gonna allow us to do. So a part of the state's application to the federal government and the ESS, ESSA application, the state superintendent can waive up to 5% of the state's total population to take alternative assessments. And it's our belief that the state may use us as a part of that 5% to say, "Are there better assessments? Are there better ways of doing this assessment?" Internally amongst the, the group of schools, we've talked about whether we want to continue with M-Step at the same time. Maybe not. Maybe some grades we do, maybe some grades we don't. But we haven't really received official notification back yet from MDE to say, "Yes, this is what you're allowed to do," or "No, you're not allowed to do this." We're, we're still in flux. I think a positive thing that has come out of this already is that MDE is, is seeing that these, whatever, nine or 10 progressive districts are requesting to the state, "Hey, something needs to be different here in assessments." And I think even that pressure is, is, is causing them to say, "Okay, maybe we, maybe we need to go to some other type of interim assessment, something other than M-Step. Maybe it's NWA, maybe it's something else." But just by us making the proposal, I think it is causing the tension at the state level and it's, it's hopefully making them make better decisions.
Should be the center.
Understanding what you said, is there a sensible? Is there any urgency that, by, urgency's not the right word. Are we better off acting now or waiting to see what happens with the state as far as what their, what their process ends up to be? And then acting on this same thing later, at a later date?
So I think the reason why all nine or 10 districts are, are acting on this is we wanna, we wanna tell the state, "We're serious about this." "We're serious about having better assessments." That doesn't mean that at the end of the day, that we actually do anything different than anybody else. Simply by doing that may cause the state to make changes. That we may say, "Yep, we're in agreement, and this is what we're comfortable with. We're gonna stay with what the state's doing from this point." They may come back and do something else. By, by passing this resolution, it in no way commits our district to do anything more or different than what we're already doing. All we're basically saying by passing this resolution is we're telling the state, "Hey, these, these districts, they're serious. The boards know about it. We, we want something to be different with assessments." And I think that's the biggest message that's being sent.
Yes, sir.
Can you share with us, yeah, the different districts that are involved in this? Or a few of them?
Yeah.
Or who've already passed the resolution?
Don't know who's passed yet or not, because we're all sort of in that process of taking it to the board. But Frazier, Troy, Bloomfield, Oxford, Dexter, Tecumseh... I said Bloomfield. Saline, Kennewah Hills.
So some of the larger school districts.
There are, and there's a couple smaller ones like Dexter, Tecumseh.
Kennewah Hills is pretty large.
Just declared by Troy back and says it's not involved. He backed out.
Troy has, okay.
Yep. You know, Agreed Sims, which was part of it originally.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Agreed, that's a really small district.
Really small, that's something I meant to say. Yeah, we're also still taking the SAT, and we're probably looking to still taking the PSAT as a precursor to the SAT. Like, like Mr. Throne said, if the state does change their assessment, we would probably still stay with what the state is doing with the NWA and the other two assessment choices. Many different variations of the proposals still keep us in at certain grade levels, the M-Step. So we might be looking at fifth grade still doing that, and then the SAT at eighth grade, ninth grade, 10th grade, and then still the SAT. So the assessment, the performance assessments and more competency-based assessments, federal line with ID. So they would be, we'd be looking at using our ID assessments. We would still be held to accountability. We would be reporting on the accountability standards with the competencies, the assessments that would be set up and based off of a, more of a statewide rubric. I mean, all of this stuff has to be thought out and approached in a thoughtful manner, and it has to be developed. But we're waiting to see if the state gives us the permission to go ahead and begin that process. Other states, just a couple of other states that have done this, I was in New Hampshire, I believe is one of the leaders in this. And there's another one or two that are, are going along these lines, trying to change and get assessment that is more authentic and indicative of the learning that is occurring. There's a lot of politics behind M-Step and the other standardized assessments. And I was just reading an article over the weekend and how the standings that were set for them and how they were set. There's, you do not believe politics in how the test scores were set for those tests. And this is really an effort to try to look at more authentic, more, not less rigorous, but the same status or more rigorous assessments that really show what kids are learning rather than just a multiple-choice standardized test that, you know, like I said before, that doesn't necessarily have all the research behind it now, especially since they keep gutting it and changing the M-Step. At the same time, if we approach this and they are not, the quality or the assessments that we think they need to be and so forth, we do not have to go forward with it, and we would be welcome to go back into the M-Step. And we'd only be doing this with state blessing.
And also, just one caveat, too, we still have enough flexibility that we also don't have to do this district-wide. We may say, "You know what? Maybe we only wanna try this out with a couple of elementary schools. Or maybe we wanna try it out with Bridges or Olba or an alternative setting." So I also don't want you to think it's just all or nothing, too. We have a lot of flexibility of what we wanna do, what we propose to the state. We have a lot of flexibility of what we want to do, what we propose to the state.
I remember distinctly, remember, there was a presentation you did a short time ago, Karen, that, where you really brought us kind of into the picture of what the M-Step evaluates and compare it to some other testing. Sorry, I don't remember the details, but I feel like this is a message we hear again and again and that's sort of incorporated into curriculum discussions and that we have what we need to make a business case for, for this in a big way, to talk about this with our district and, you know, if we have people who question this move. Do you feel, I feel that way, but I feel like that on a high level because I'm not diving deep. Sounds like you guys feel like you have the evidence, it's an evidence-based decision.
Yeah, and as part of this, too, is part of the accountability. It's not like we're trying to get away from, because like I said, we're still going to be held accountable. These scores are going to be in comparison to and put up against, you know, I don't want to say like apples-for-apples kind of thing with the M-Step, but we will still be held to all the same accountability and everything else. But also, in talking with Mr. Thron, in trying to develop more of a local assessment dashboard, more transparent, where we've seen some examples in like boot foot builds and so forth, so that you can look up and you can see assessments that definitely our students and teachers are more familiar with than maybe many of our parents. So that that is being reported, you know, we have the data for like how many kids are on a grade level according to Fonzie Penel. We have our screener assessment results, trying to get those out there so parents can see those results and see that data and have some, a little bit better read as to where things are at. In trying to, so we're not looking to get away from accountability, actually welcome more of it and trying to have, and making the public, our constituents, more aware of the assessments and the things that we're doing that we think are more directly tied into our curriculum and are better measures of where we're at. Because then year after year, having those out there so that you can see and see as we move along. At the same time, that's like Mr. Thron said, we have the flexibility in this to, you know, put a toe in the water, so to speak, or put a whole foot, or jump all in. And that will, I think Mr. Thron would say, we come back to the board and make sure your praise is part of that decision.
I guess maybe my concern is, like, we have decided as a group, I don't want this resolution giving you permission just to move, you know, not deep. I want to make sure that we're really thoughtful about this.
Absolutely.
Because it really is, I mean, off the reservation a little bit, with 530 districts doing one thing in Michigan and eight of them doing the other, all of a sudden we're in that eight and not that 530. I mean, that, that really causes me a reason to pause, as long as we're not committing to anything other than just the resolution.
That's correct.
It is a lot of work. It is going to be a lot of work. So believe me, I've looked at this very steadily, stealing it first, because this is not easy to do. I mean, it's not like we're just going to take our assessments and voila, there we go, because they all have to be normed, what you call the basic education jargon, you know, all the steps and stuff. And we're going to have to work with other districts to be able to do this. And it's going to be, we've got a lot of assessment literacy that has to be taken care of. And so it's something that we would also look at facing in over a number of years, with maybe like one grade level or one school going and just a couple of grade levels or a grade level attempting this the first year and so forth. Because it is a lot of work. This is not going to be easy. It's not a, like I said earlier, it's not like we're avoiding anything. This is actually way more work than just showing up. Because quite honestly, Joyce, while we're not Troy, our M-Step results are very good. So the easiest thing would be to do and not put me over the edge, would be to stick with M-Step. And Mr. Thron has heard that from me the whole time. So going into this, I'm going in with open eyes and realizing, and I will make sure that it is, because I've spent a lot of time the last four years in putting things in place, especially with elementary, middle school and so forth, and making sure that we were ready and that our results are moving along. And I've used the M-Step to kind of help judge and see where we're at, as well as other measures. So I will not leave you that behind by this. So it's been something we've had a lot of back and forth and discussion on and going over. But I'm going in with open eyes, but still, quite a bit of trepidation as well.
Just for the record, do you all, are you of the opinion that the amount of work involved in taking this step is what the holdup might be for other districts to commit to it?
I think the state coming out, I'm sorry to jump in, Mr. Thron, but I think first of all, I think the state coming out with what they just came out with two weeks ago, we have not heard anything on assessment. They proposed changing assessment probably two years ago, three years ago with that stuff. And then we have not heard anything at all, like this proposal that they put out and they put, the announcements that they did was they awarded the contract for the interim benchmarks to three, actually two vendors, three assessments. And we have not heard anything on that. This was proposed two years ago. Have not heard anything on it and all of a sudden this came out, like on just a random Wednesday or whatever, an announcement they've awarded this contract. While we were sitting here, an email popped up and I looked at it real quick because it had to do with one of the approved vendors. And they're announcing, hey, we're one of the approved, but we've not heard anything from the state as far as how this is to be used, who's paying for it, funded or anything like that. And so this is, I think that email has caused some people, like Troy that was in on this and was all along with it, and I was at the last meeting with Troy and they were, everything was going fine. And I think that's caused a lot of pause. I think the other part is, is that you've got to be committed to this, you've got to be ready to do this and in a position. And I think with our ID assessments, especially at the 6A level, and that's probably where we would start first, with those, because the ID assessments, the performance assessments are more of a competency-based approach. So it wouldn't take much to also then to make sure that those are the type of assessments, I believe, at least at this point. And so, like I said, I'm going in with open eyes and if I don't like it, we're back to where we were at. Mr. Thron and I have talked about that and agreed that it's got to meet a certain standard before we do this. We just believe also that this type of assessment is a better measure of kids' abilities and where they're at versus a test like the M-Step, which is, there's just not enough items in it and it's, I don't know what you'd call that.
Thank you.
All right, board members, we've got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Weaver, back to you.
Yeah, Mrs. Vince is going to be taking the floor, the lovely and talented Mrs. Vince. She's awesome. She's one of our ID coordinators. She works with Lakeville and Leonard. And these were two of our last elementaries to go through reauthorization process. And so, since we've had the others, we've got you and presented, we're very proud of both the buildings and we wanted to share these results and also, because this is not a committee for Mrs. Vince and all the hard work she's done, especially on Leonard.
Thank you for having me. I'm going to try to keep this brief, so we'll see how I do. In your packet, you have the reports from the self-study visits for ID, for Lakeville and Leonard. Leonard is in blue and Lakeville is in gold. So the ID self-study, as you know, it takes two years to complete this process. It is a program evaluation. It's a school improvement process. It's a time for us to reflect on our program implementation and to make goals for the next coming years. Our next evaluation will be in five years, so everything that they have recommended to us, that we are going to continue to work on, we now have, we have three years the first time around, now we have five. So we have time to grow. The way the report reads is they come in, it's the last part of the process, and they collect findings. And based on those findings, ID comes up and generates recommendations for the school and commendations for the school. There are a multitude of both in these documents, so I am just going to share a couple commendations from each school and then tell you where we're headed. I am not going to read these commendations. I hope you can read them. I'm going to tell you why I chose the ones I chose. So this is first Leonard. So these are the great things they had to say about Leonard, and I just chose these two. The first one because, the first one talks about action. In the IB's eyes, action, the ability to take action is the highest form of assessment because if a child can take what he or she has learned and apply it to something new to take action on it, then that child is shown that he or she has really learned the content. So that is a feather in the pack. The next one I chose, it's about the learner profile attributes, but to me, the important piece in this commendation is that it talks about the teachers and it talks about the students. When we first went through this process, many of our commendations read things like, the IB coordinator understands, or the school understands, but it wasn't so specific. When I see commendations that connect to the teachers and to the students and then to parents, to me, that means that we're having to trickle down the check and that's an amazing thing to be proud of. So those are two commendations from Leonard. And thanks. From Lakeville, I chose this first one because the first one talks about the personal, social and emotional needs of students. The first time we went through this process for authorization, this was a recommendation that Lakeville worked on. So now, not only is it just being seen as it's taken care of, now it's being, we're being complimented for our efforts. And over the past two years, Lakeville has been trying to implement the Ruler Program. And so to me, this speaks to the evidence of that work. So this is something for, as Lakeville staff, for us to really be proud of. The next one is, I chose as a similar, for similar reason that I chose for Leonard's. Once again, it's not just one person that they're noticing. They're noticing from observations, artifacts, from the students, from the teachers and from the parents, the importance of reflection. This is huge for us because reflection is about the process of learning. It's very important as an IB school that we think about the process of learning as opposed to the product. You know, so instead of just, you know, the diorama, it's what was the process of learning that had to take place to create that diorama that we are more focused on. And a pivotal part of that is the ability to reflect, so that you can make goals for yourself, see where your strengths are as a learner and to see where you need to improve. And they saw it all over the school. So that's amazing. So now the question is, now what? So we have five years to come up with ways to improve and continue to grow and reflect on our practice. And there are different categories, so we will take five years to do that. So for now, our focus is strictly on curriculum. For IB, when you talk about curriculum, you're talking about the written curriculum, what's being taught and what's being assessed. So things for us to focus on now, like we're going to continue to grow our own understanding of inquiry through professional development, lab classrooms and such, and then the written curriculum. For Leonard, it came up as a matter to be addressed that all of the written units of inquiry were not written, taught and reflected on. We knew that was going to be an issue because we are in the process, we came in before to talk about how we're rewriting our units to make them more transdisciplinary. So we fully anticipated that this would be a matter to be addressed. We're not concerned about it. But that means that that needs to be taken care of by December 1st. So for Leonard, that will be our first focus for both the schools combined. It's that whole, because Lakeville is working on rewriting and reflecting on the units as well. We're all sort of in the same place in that area. So my last bit is a thank you. These are also commendations. I am not going to read them, but I'm going to say why I chose them. In both of these documents, there are numerous commendations about the governing body, the administration and the pedagogical leadership team. That's all the people in this room. This work is hard. It needs, it takes teamwork and collaboration on all ends. So I thank you for supporting us by giving us a structure to help us be successful in implementing this program. I thank you for the guidance and the leadership that you provide. And I thank you for having us come in and share what we've done and the progress that we've made and how we continue to grow. And thank you.
Do you have any questions, Mrs. Vince?
Good job.
Great job.
Yeah, she did a fantastic job, as well as the principals, Mr. McDevitt and Mrs. Gibson-Marshall. So we're very proud of the two buildings and looking to move forward and continue on the IB journey.
Is there anything that Lakeville has to address between now and December?
No, it was not a matter to, no, they have recommendations. We have five years to turn to draw on, but there was no matter to be addressed.
Thank you.
Can I just mention that Christine has spent her, the majority of her IB coordinator years at Lakeville, and not having any matters to be addressed is a huge, just compliment to her and what she's done with our building and moving IB forward in our building, because not having a single matter to be addressed is super impressive and that is because of her and what she's done.
Thank you.
You've done a fantastic job with, you've just been out there at Leonard. This is the second year?
This is only, yes, well, this is the, this is only my second year at Leonard, so I sort of jumped in.
The leader through the process, as you know, Paul was the PYP coordinator and it is a tough position for our principal to be in. And Paul did a great job in trying to hang in there and that, but realized that he needed some assistance and Mrs. Vince has done a great job covering this. He really cleaned up a lot of things, so we're very happy, very proud.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Weaver, thank you. Mr. Barnard.
Good evening. So actually, on the docket is the Oakland County Board of Commissioners' school drinking water agreement. And that was part of the board hack. And so, back in late December, I believe it was, maybe early December, the Oakland County Board of Commissioners sent out an application. And most school districts in Oakland County actually were able to, receiving some free water fountains and actually water bottle filling stations. And we actually put in, for grades K through, K through six, we actually put in an application for 18 units, three at all the elementary schools each, as well as the middle school. And we were granted each of those schools, both three. And so this agreement is for those 18 units, District One. In addition to that, I wanted to say that we also extended the pricing, which is $783 per unit, for the high school to obtain three. And so we were looking for outside of this agreement to purchase at the low cost from the lowest bidder for this project, three additional, in addition to the 18 that we are receiving for free for the district. So just wanted to, you know, again, talk about this and, you know, we do have to figure out the logistics if the board sees that we should be signing this agreement. And once we receive the units, we have, you know, a little bit of time to install these units District One.
Are these going to like replace the drinking fountains?
They will. So they won't replace necessarily all the drinking fountains in the schools, but there will be an add to what is currently a simple fountain right now. There's a water, filling, water bottle filling station incorporated with a fountain in the units that we're going to be receiving.
Sam, I don't see a motion underneath here. Is it, are we going to be doing this at a, oh, there it is, thank you. There is a motion. Because I see you have a deadline of April 20th, right?
Yes. Yeah, should we, we need to get back with the county with the approved resolution if you will sign the deal.
So would someone like to put a motion on the floor? Dr. Brazington?
Move to approve the Oakland County Board of Commissioners' drinking water program participation agreement.
Is there support? Ms. Guthrie? Discussion? Dan?
Going through the list that we're getting, that grant is only available, two questions, is only available K through six.
Correct.
So that's why we're purchasing the additional ones, because it's not part of the grant.
That's correct.
And over and above the units, there is a cost associated with installing them, correct?
There is a need, yes. And the cost is to obviously, you know, replace the existing units and to ensure that there's electricity at each of those sites of the existing fountain, 110 volt. Obviously revised plumbing, maybe some structural repair to the walls. These obviously have to be ADA compliant as well. And so, you know, we estimate a cost of between $1,500 and $2,000 in labor to make these changeouts per unit. Again, that's just an estimate. We've never done these before. So, yes, there's an initial cost to the district. These are free and we're very thankful, but it's not necessarily just the free funds.
And just to be, make sure we know, the money's coming out of the general fund, is not?
Yeah, this is an unbudgeted item to do an installation. You know, we again are given a certain period of time. You know, we, again, are given a certain period of time. I would hope that we would not be using this year's funds. I would bake this into the budget for making some operations for next year, 2019.
What was your estimated cost per unit?
$1,500 to $2,000. It depends on the complexity of, you know, again, if there is current electricity in that facility at the unit. In addition to the fact that there could be some issues with the current plumbing of an existing unit that may not be working very well. Obviously, there's a drain involved for each one, and obviously a water. So there's some, there's some work involved with each of these units. It's not as simple as just, you know, replacing it.
Yes.
Would you be willing to provide us with, or do you plan to provide us with a complete assessment, a financial forecast for what this would cost, based on the number of units that we have to trade out, so that it's fully transparent?
Sure. You know, we would have to get a quote from, or quotes from contractors in order to obviously do that for you.
No need to do, like, right away? Sorry. What I mean is, like, when the time comes.
Oh, sure.
If it's a 2018-2019 initiative, you can put that off.
Sure. Yeah, it's just one of those things that, you know, we, we have a specific amount of time, however, as part of this agreement, if you read the agreement, you know, we're given a very specific amount of time to do this installation. It's not just us, it's every Oakland County School District who obviously partake in this. So you also have to report back that you've installed these and met all of the, you know, the regulations of IB compliance as well. So, again, it depends on when these are delivered. We have a window. So, you know, again, we would have to obtain the quotes, obviously, from the vendors, and then provide that to the board. So yes, we definitely could do that. But again, once we sign this agreement and we receive these units, we're under the agreement that we are going to use them. So I just wanted to clear that.
Yeah.
Whether the quote is high or low.
Yeah. But we're deciding tonight, right?
You are.
So it's much more informational than it is decision-based.
I understand completely.
I see that it's 120 days that you have.
It is.
When you get, that's not a lot of time.
It's not, it's not. The, the nice thing from an operational standpoint is, you know, I can see receiving these fountains potentially sometime in late May or June, as an example. And we do have the summer months, obviously, when the majority of the schools, obviously, are, you know, so there's not that many people in schools.
Can we get ahead of it by assessing who the vendors could potentially be? Start that process?
I think Tony already has a good take on, you know, who we use, and obviously, I'd like to get several quotes if we possibly can. The issues that we come across, and I know you've heard me kind of harp on this in the past with different projects, is it's a fantastic economy right now in terms of building trades, and trying to obtain two or three quotes for similar work can be a challenge on a timely basis. I'm not saying it's impossible, because I always strive, so does Tony, to get multiple quotes to get the best value for the district, but it's not always going to be easy to do or even possible.
So maybe time to get started? That's, that's what I'm hearing.
Thanks.
Good question.
So we're getting 18 for free. Those can only be used in kindergarten through sixth grade buildings.
Correct.
Technically, fifth grade buildings for us. And then we're only getting three between the middle school and the high school?
No, actually, since it's K through six, when we were able to achieve three for the middle school.
Oh, I get it. So because our sixth graders are, okay.
Seven eighth graders.
So the three would really be for high school?
Yeah. We're just putting a barricade or something. That was Mr. Weaver.
Can't use that.
Joking. You're joking.
This is a reminder to be nice.
Kind, gentle.
A little heavy.
I think Tony wants to make mention some things as well.
Okay.
On an average, I think it's probably going to be about $2,000 you're going to put in. I'll probably use multiple plumber, plumbing contractors, maybe two or three. That'll make sense, because if you try to give them all to one guy, they're not going to get put in all at once. And it just depends on the complexity of it. So I'm thinking, you know, they might come up and everything aligns, and it's an $800,000 install. But then we go to another one, we may have problems with the drain or something like that, which I do at, like, Lakeville, and there's one that needs to go in there. So I might have to do a little bit more demo on the wall, and open it up, and fix the drain in it and everything like that. So that might be a $2,000 one, or $2,200 one, or something like that. So on a good average, I'm thinking we're going to be right around $2,000 a unit. So, but I'm going to probably have to use them. We've got some really good local plumbers. I'll give, you know, 10 to this contractor, 10 to this, shows that he can do a really good job on them. I'll give him several of them, you know, and go from there. But it's hard to get an estimate out, because they have to take the unit off the wall, they got to align with everything, and hopefully, there are the electric water coolers that are there. And, you know, a lot of them, it's just going to be add in the future, the water bottle filling station on it. And if the drain's good, and that's a big problem with a lot of them, it's just the drains are bad and they have to be reworked and everything like that. So hopefully, we should be able to come in under that, but we'll have to see.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I did also want to add, so beyond the drinking water fountains, we obviously had a safety and security meeting in the district back on, I think it was March 16th. And, you know, from that time until now, Tony, many of us in administration as well have been, you know, touring the buildings, in addition to what we toured previous to the safety meeting. And as you know, we're continuing to, you know, just increase safety and security in the district. I wanted to give the board just a quick update. In particular, a couple of things. One of them is the ALICE training, which is the active shooter training for our employees. And so Nancy and her department, and individuals that work for Nancy, have done a great job with disseminating the training to all of our staff. But in addition to our staff, we're also going to be rolling that out as quickly as we can to third-party contractors, as well as our subs, you know, on a timely basis. So then, as many people as we can within the buildings are trained for active shooter training. And so I just wanted to make everyone aware of that. We do give our employees a deadline. It is a mandatory training. It's a 45-minute, one-on-one based training for ALICE. I believe it's, is it May 4th or May 5th, Nancy, or something? Something in early May, correct? I can't recall.
11.
May 11th, thank you. And then, in addition to that, we are going to have a few individuals in the district actually certified as ALICE trainers. And so what that means is they're going to be taking individuals in the district over a period of time to have live training. So actually, you know, scenario analysis within the schools. And so, there's going to be more information coming from that. We have to get our individuals trained first. We could also utilize ALICE-trained staff as well to bring into the district. But that's a logistics that we have to work out, timing, in terms of when we and where we're going to be doing these trainings with our staff. So I just wanted to give you a heads up. Now, from an equipment standpoint, in addition to the training from safety and security, we've been enhancing what we've already put in place within the district. As an example for that, here at the middle school, we've actually completed in the last few weeks the actual secured entry at the main entrance, right by the office, for a secure vestibule that didn't exist in the past. And in addition to that, we've had some buzzers put in, such as at Leonard, as well as, you know, Tony, where was it besides Leonard, that we had the buzzer system, not the Aphone put in? I apologize for that.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes, so thank you.
Oh, yes. I was just there. And he buzzed in.
Oh, yes, you've got the cam, video conference.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
System.
And Clearlake has got just a buzzer release system.
DA has a video conferencing system.
DA, we had put that in previously, that's added. We had an existing buzzer release system at Lakeville, and then Leonard, we just have a buzzer release system there. And then we put the new video conferencing system at the front door here of the middle school. So when you come up now to get into the main office, you got, you're in a security vestibule. That's what we created. In the last line, they started that, so we just finished it and enhanced it with this video conferencing system. So you're able to step into the building, but you can't get out of the vestibule unless somebody lets you in. So it's kind of nice. So they consider that a security vestibule.
Yes.
At least started that at DA.
Furthermore, OHS, I was just going to add that we're adding two secure vestibules to the front entrance as well, and Tony's been working on that. And so, those two secure vestibules are doors number one and two, correct?
One and two, yeah. So the north parking lot, you'll come up to that one, you'll be able to come through a door into the vestibule, and there'll be an Aphone system there, and you'll have to be buzzed into the lobby. And then on the other side, on the PAC side, there's going to be the same procedure. There's going to be an Aphone system there, and it'll, will register back to the main office. And then you have a couple of dust sites right there. So you won't get past that vestibule, and you won't be in the lobby now. Then after you get in there, you're coming to the lobby, coming to the front office.
And again, you know, beyond the equipment, and this is just a component of the equipment, just a little bit of an update. You know, this is not something where, as all of you should be aware, this is not something where, oh, we're done and we're going to walk away. We're constantly monitoring and trying to enhance the security within the district. This isn't a one-time shot, if you will. One-time, I shouldn't say that. This isn't a one-time, that was a really poor, well, I apologize. But, you know, this is not a one-time item that we're doing here, okay? And so I just want to, everyone to be aware of that. But in addition to that, it isn't just about the equipment. It's about the communication within the district. It's about the communication, you know, not only from central office to the buildings, but from the buildings to the staff and to the students. And, you know, Ken has obviously set out to all of the buildings the OK to safety, the OK to safe campaign. And so every one of the schools is going to be rolling that out if they haven't already done so. But in addition to that, if you haven't, you know, if not aware, the Oakland County Sheriff has also assigned some of their staff to each of our buildings within the district. And so they've stepped up patrols in and around the buildings. Not to say that they have a dedicated staff that's going to be there all day, that's not what I'm saying. But what I am saying is there's just that added component of the visibility. They're aware, they're becoming more aware of our schools, both interior and exterior, and their presence is definitely, has been seen and acknowledged, and that will continue to, you know, be the case within the district. So I wanted you to all be aware of that.
Thank you. Yes?
Sam, you mentioned early on in the, in the update on the safety, Safety Committee decisions on the decisions that you guys are making in an ongoing manner, which thank you for that update. It's really nice to have that. That the vendors, the suppliers who come into schools may be trained. Do we have to pay them for their time to train them? Is that something that's come up?
You know what, that hasn't come up, and quite frankly, you know, we're going to make it, at least, it's the cost of doing business with the district. And let me say it this way, we're not alone. Every school district, every municipality, there's a lot of private businesses out there that are taking this training, true. If it's not ALICE, it's another training. This is unfortunately, and I do say that we're unfortunate, a part of the world we live in today, and it is a requirement for me to our vendors in order to do this. Just as it is going to be a requirement, it is a requirement for our staff to do this. I think it's important, I think we all think it's important, just to have that knowledge. So.
So a quick follow-up question. How do you, we, if there are, if there's a possibility that some of the people coming into our schools are already ALICE-trained, are we, how are we documenting that we're checking for that? If they're not going to go through the training we can provide because they already have the training? Do they have a certification? They have something that we can document, fits on record?
Well, that's a great question. I mean, from the outsider's perspective, when I say outsiders, I shouldn't use that word outsiders. Third-party contractors as an example, that are part of our family here in Oxford. And when I say that, I mean, the most great example is ABM, our custodian firm, okay? Now, we've obtained, obviously, the contact information that's non-district emails, so that we can monitor and find out who's trained from that perspective. So we do have an idea. We have the documentation for that. In addition to that, you know, we're working through, as Nancy has and her team, trying to obtain the information for our, basically, teaching substitutes and our paras, anyone who's subbing in the district, we're trying to get that training as well, so that we can track and monitor who is and who isn't. Beyond that, from a vendor situation, we're still working through that. I don't have all the answers freely today, because there are some holes that exist. And again, we're not perfect, but we're going to try to get there, to where we're better prepared. And so I can't answer your question in totality to say that there's a, there's a tracking mechanism right now for those other individual firms, but we're going to think through that and find out how we're going to do it. Whether it's a swipe card, that's a temporary issue, whatever, we're going to do. We'll definitely, we'll keep you informed as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, very good, very good. Human resources.
Yes, I did want to follow up with the board about the complaints that were filed back from a couple of our two leaders and parents. Wanted to let you know that the manner was only investigated. We, there were numerous meetings and investigations that took place with all the parties, and as well as actions that were taken to make sure that our students and the candidates are foremost, first and foremost. So we are, communications had been made back to the parties, and we are considering the commanders close now. I'm going to just follow up on that. You're welcome. And in addition, next board meeting, we hope to bring some new higher education. So we, we have a new OVA instructional coach, so I'll be bringing that. And also, we concluded our second interview for HR today. We will be following up, obviously, with the next steps. We're never done with that process, but also for the elementary instruction.
Nice.
Good.
Hopefully we'll have some new things.
Thank you, Nancy. Student services.
So back on October 4th, it was our count day. So we have finally received our audited numbers. So, you know, we count the kids on that count day. Then in October, we submit a preliminary number. Then in December, we get an unaudited number. And then just last week, we received the final audited number for the fall, which is So there is an additional appeal that we're in right now for, to try to obtain an additional 7.8 FTD, but so far, that is the official number. And that number is up about 25 from that unaudited number, from the numbers that I was sharing with you in October, in November, when everybody's saying to me, what's the number? What's the number? And I'm like, I don't want to say. It's up about 25. So, yep. So we're, we get our spring count, and now that, we go through that exact same process again, the preliminary, the unaudited, and the audited. That's all.
Very good, thank you, thank you. Policy.
Yeah, so this is a policy regarding admission, and just bringing that up to date. So we have a motion.
Ms. Guthrie.
We have to approve a first reading of policy number 2105, admission of the district.
Is there support? Dan?
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Unscheduled audience participation? Don't all run up at one time? Yes?
I have a couple of questions, but my first question is in regard to the alternative assessments.
Hold on one second.
Can, can we have you stand up and state your?
Oh.
Yeah.
It's a card. Okay.
Formality, please.
Oh, sure.
We just have, this section has a little bit of formal, do you have a, the board minutes? Do you have the?
No, I didn't grab those.
Sir.
Oh. Do you want, oh, do you want me to write it down?
Yeah, if you would, please. It just gets us a chance to know who you are and.
Perfect.
Yeah, please.
So I can just wait a long, do you want me to do it?
Why don't you just state your name?
Okay.
And have your participation. And then you can fill that out. And then you can fill that out.
And then I'll fill, okay.
Yes.
My name is Heather Trukowski. I have two children, one in DA and one in OES. So I'll be writing down my questions. Excuse me?
If, if you wanna ask them, you can go ahead and ask them.
Okay.
The board will, the board will not, the board, um, may not respond to the questions, but they're willing to hear the questions.
Okay.
Go ahead, and you can then write it down.
And so Heather, so Heather, let me read this to you, since you don't have it. Individuals are welcome to have five minutes during this public participation section, and then all statements are directed to me, the presiding officer.
Okay.
No person may address or question board members, so the job isn't to kinda like, you know, interrogate us, it's, you're sharing information with us.
Okay.
And so, then it's this, the, we introduce the idea that we'd like you to give us your name and address and that information, that's what the card is for.
Oh, okay.
What that does typically is allow us to know what it is you're trying to bring to us, and, and so now the floor's yours.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, some of the questions that I have in regard to the assessment, and the changes into the assessment, will that impact any college entry? It will be, 'cause if they're looking for us to take any certain tests for high school students, what impact in or out of state? Will they look at that? Uh, my other question is, with the, with the safety, has there been any further avenues taken with OELC at DA and OES? As far as buzzing systems, or how to get in, how to, how they know who's coming in? I know that one of the schools in particular, you just, you just walk right in, whether it be 6:30 in the morning or 6 o'clock at night. So, that is my other question, and the other, and the last question is, when these vestibules were created, and when you go and you approach the school, and they buzz you in, let's say it's a brother who's on an emergency card, but you've never seen him before, what are the steps that are taken to approve that person entry into the building? Is a license shown? Do you have to have verification from the parent that that person is supposed to be coming in? What steps are followed, you know, when they buzz it? What are they looking at? Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. So, I, assessments and safety are the two issues that I got. The one was the effect on college entry, and the safety was, um, kinda what we were talking about earlier, the things that we're doing at each of the schools, but more specifically, you're saying, what's the policy of entry?
Yes.
Someone buzzes in, what's the steps to verify that you should say, okay?
Yes.
Is that what, so I understood the questions correctly?
Yes. And OELC.
Specific, OELC, DA, and OES.
Yeah, so OELC is that early childhood learning program connected to OES.
Yep.
Yeah, the before and after care.
All right.
6:30 in the morning till 6 o'clock at night.
So with the first, with the first one, I'm just wondering, Ken, would you wanna speak to the assessment side of that?
Yeah, the only assessments that we would be looking at changing would be the M-Step, which, right now, colleges use the, either the SAT or ACT for entrance, and so it would not impact at all. They don't ever request the M-Step, it's not set along as part of their transcripts or anything like that. So, and we would still, obviously, require our 11th graders or juniors to take the ACT and the SAT.
Okay.
So, there would be no impact.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Ken. On the, uh, safety buzzing issues, you gave us some updates on what we're doing in the different buildings, but, but specifically, um, with the early...
Yeah, early childhood.
...center, we're looking at early entries and late, you know, entries. So, do you have any comment on that?
I do, actually, you know, so that was, uh, something that came up at both schools, actually, not only at, as you said, OELC slash OE, also at DA, just because of when the start of school's, you know, 6:30 for the kids that are coming into those programs very early, before the start of normal school, if you will, and then obviously, late pickup. There's some intricacies that, you know, we have to work through in terms of not only process, but physical buzzer systems that are either existing and haven't been working, or ones that just, they're not using because the protocol wasn't in place. And so Tony had met with Washeya, I know they're both not here right now, but Tony is actually looking to ensure that, for instance, at OELC, specifically at OES, that the, there's a buzzer system that's working correctly at the door that's located at the cafeteria area. Right now, it's not working, it's mainly, it can't be heard, there's some issues there, specifically early morning. And so he was looking to get some quotes as to what can be done, and then Washeya was looking at what can be, basically, done from a procedural standpoint during both the morning and the evening, once the equipment's either revised or new equipment's put in place. So, looking at DA as another example, there is the entrance, we all had our board meeting there, in the actual cafeteria area. We don't have quite a solution there yet. I know that, I think that Tony was talking with you about, at least I don't think there's a solution yet. I know when we had the board meeting, you and Tony were speaking of, and I hate to put you on the spot, I apologize, has Tony yet mentioned to you, anything to you specifically about that specific entrance for the OELC?
We've walked the building, looked, looking at different options for, um, basically the entrance where that pre-existing separate system is at.
Sure.
Than where our card scanner is, is way down by the office where sign-in and things. So there's just some issues with even the older system.
Yeah.
And if that was running, is it really practical to allowing access into the building in that fashion? So, Tony was looking and exploring options so that we could secure those doors, say, from 6:00 AM till 6:00 PM, which is transition time for the start of day.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And so it doesn't make operational sense, and I'm sure you're very well aware of this, to have everyone coming in the front, near the front office doors, specifically for the program. And so when we did the walkthrough, it just made a lot more sense for us to look at putting an additional secure entry closer to where the kids are going to be, obviously. And so we are looking at that, we have looked at it, I think Tony is going to be obtaining some quotes to get that done, and so I just wanted you to be aware that that's presently where we're at. And I didn't bring that specific door, I didn't go door-to-door when I gave my, my verbal update, kind of at a high level, but there are some, not just, you know, the doors that you're mentioning, but district-wide, there's some other instances as well that we're looking to enhance. And as I said earlier to the board, you know, it's not just, hey, this is, this is good, we're done. It's, we're constantly looking at what can be done to enhance the security within the district, and those are great points that you bring up, and definitely, we've, we've already looked at those as well, and we're doing some things about this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Sam, there was, there was one last question that she had, that wondered if you wanted to talk about that. Obviously, in the, even the best system, there's someone at the other end that's saying, okay, you can come in.
Absolutely.
So what kind of training is involved, and what kind of process does that individual go through that tells them, yes, they can buzz someone in, or no, they gotta investigate further?
Well, that's a great question. This, this was brought up by several people, one of them was with Nancy in the high school, and, you know, there was definitely, you know, we're looking at putting these secure entries at the beginning of, you know, the day, what's the lock, you know, once the bell rings, those doors are gonna be locked down eventually. So once you press the iPhone and, you know, they see your picture, what are you going to do? And that's what you were mentioning as well, as, as the secretary, who's normally manning this, those iPhone cameras at their desk, you know, I don't, I don't wanna speak for you, Nancy, but I can say that, you know, when I buzz in, I would like to show I do, this is who I am, bring it up, they're not gonna know who you are otherwise, and so, I don't know.
Yeah, and I think we, we talked about protocol, because those are all the questions that come to us in terms of, you know, the secretaries wanna make sure they're doing the right thing, so, you know, we did talk about setting up a protocol, you know, and what do you do if you see that, okay, I, they don't have a valid reason, why are they here, and so forth. So, you know, all of those things we're working through, the buzzers are in place, so they're, they're working on it and working through some of those pieces, but definitely, that's something that we've had a lot of discussion about, and we'll continue to develop the protocol for them.
Thank you.
All right, number 12, scheduled activities. 24th, another meeting, and then the senior talent show is on the 25th. Any points of clarification? Final board comments. Ms. Shaker.
Okay. Um, I thought it started off great with the singing and stuff. I really enjoyed it, that was a great way to start everything, all talented people, and she got teacher of the year also, I don't know if that was mentioned, but she also got teacher of the year and was recognized in like a big state program, so that, that's pretty awesome, so that was great. Lots of good stuff. I'll keep it short.
Ms. Guthrie.
Thank you. Did I, I'll try to keep it short, too. I think those performances were incredible. So much fun, I love having a board meeting like this, it's really fun, with the, with all the students and showing what we do really well. I wanted to thank Ken and Tim for thinking ahead and kinda jumping into what seems maybe like a good opportunity for our students to, from the evaluation standpoint, to give them an opportunity to shine in ways that it sounds like are legitimate, you know, and appropriate, and comprehensive, and that's, I think that was what really came through to me when you did your presentation, that kinda compared the different testing and our results, but, you know, where's the comprehensive opportunity for, where every student can fit in? So I appreciate that you guys are doing that, and I really appreciate you considering taking on that work, 'cause it sounds like it's a, it's a big job. I have just a quick point, maybe, to think about, and that is, as we look at protocol development, and Heather, thank you for your question, as we look at protocol development for building entry, I guess I'm wondering, are we benchmarking? Are we, you know, are we looking outward and looking at other school districts and what they're doing, and what the process is, and what's safe, not just in the state of Michigan, but maybe across the country? What's working, what's maybe not working, where the challenges are, so, yeah.
Good, thank you. Mr. De Alessandro.
Well, to Heather, to Jenny's point about benchmarking, and since I'm compassionate, I wanna bring up this point, you know, you're, we're asking, we're asking, uh, that person that's responsible for, I mean, that, that's a big responsibility, let's not, let's not call it anything than it is. It's a huge responsibility to have one person say, I'm gonna let you in, but I'm not gonna let you in. I think what we need to do is, we need to educate our parents. This is the new standard, this is the new norm. It's not, hey, I pay taxes, I'm walking into that school. That cannot happen anymore. As frustrated as people are gonna get, myself probably included, this is the new norm. And I think that's first and foremost, that we need to impress upon our parents and our community as well. Our buildings, you know what? That is, that's a safe place, and there's gonna be changes. So I think that's really important, that we impress upon our staff, and our, and our parents, and the people in the community. I also wanted to thank Deja for, you know, it's, it, I think it's easy, we feel as though it's easy, because it's, you come in here and, you know, it's just part of your day, but this is now going on at 8:30, and you've been here probably since, what?
Noon.
6 o'clock this morning.
Noon.
Noon.
Kidding, wake up, dude.
It's a long day, and, and I just want, you know, you do this after all the kids leave, and after everybody leaves, they did a phenomenal job. The presentation, it's not easy, and, and as an eighth grader, to get in front of adults and show as much passion for what they're doing, and, and that's great, and that comes from leadership, not just from you, but from the entire staff here, so thank you very much, and thanks for providing fruit instead of cookies. It's a little bit better for us.
Spring break, yeah. If you're coming.
And the last thing, I wanna thank Tim and Ken for kinda looking outside the box with assessment. I read an article today about the national, um, assessment of students across the nation. Reading is going down, math is going down, it's a scary thought. Where's it going up? It's going up in Florida. Well, my first thought was, that's where all people are going, that's where the jobs have shifted to. We have to think differently, and we, as you said so eloquently, we're either gonna put our toe or our foot in the water, or we're gonna jump in. I like the idea of having flexibility, because we just don't know the political side of this. And as unfortunate as it is, it is all political. It's what can we do for ourselves? And we need to look at it, what can we do for our students? And I appreciate us doing that, Ken is, Ken's taking it on, and he's even said, it's gonna be a lot more work, so Ken, I appreciate it. The easy thing to do would have been, just keep doing what we're doing. But that's not what we expect from our kids, our students. We expect them to go above and beyond, and I thank you for that, Ken. Tim, that's it.
Thank you. Dr. Brazington.
Sure, just echo all the comments. Um, I had a chance to do some of the spring events, the sporting events, and, you know, usually it was how much time and dedication our coaches and our athletes give our kids. So I just wanna commend all those people above and beyond their school day, who give to our kids. It's a great, great place to be on a weekend or on a weeknight, there's always something going on at that high school. I'm just so impressed with the quality of the coaching staff and the athletes, and the courage that they display, and looking forward to the OVA Invitational coming up at the end of April.
Hopefully it's not snowing. Thank you. Oxford Middle School, you rock. As I watched the presentation, and thank you for the, I couldn't get my camera up quick enough, but, the kinds of stuff that those young people are doing doesn't just change the culture of a school, but ultimately, maybe even the culture of a generation that, that realizes that hate and anger and, and it hasn't gotten us where we wanted to get, and so maybe there's a more positive approach, and there's a win-win, and I just love the fact of teaching our kids that, so thank you very much. I, I agree with the whole assessment thing, I love the fact that we're on the edge of pushing, pushing for the best, pushing for the best. The IB reauthorization, wow. I mean, we've just gotta be proud, we've just gotta be proud as, as a, as a district. Safety and security, we talk about it all the time, but I really appreciate the updates, same with the cheerleading situation, and the issue that we had previously, I just think it's important that we, we come full circle and, and know where we've gone on some of these, and the safety, expect that we're gonna wanna hear something from you often, as we're talking about protocols and those kinds of things. We wanna know that we can say amen to certain things, and we know that certain things are in place, and so I just appreciate what you're doing. And thank you, as a parent, for coming and, and sharing some of that, and, you know, this is something that we've really gotta grow into, this whole safety thing, right? Dan says, it's, it's just the way it's going to be, and we've gotta catch up to it, and we've gotta stay in front. So, thanks for your hard work, everyone, I don't think I have anything else. Mr. Throme.
Thank you. Really, the only thing I think I'd like to bring up, besides what everybody else has already said, and thank you, Deja, for being such a gracious host. Right before spring break, we ended up canceling our board workshop on budgeting, and so really, my question for you all is, is it the board's desire to try and reschedule that? We can certainly do that, I just, I'm looking for a direction from you all as teacher desire.
Show of hands as to yes, you think that we'd still, we'd still wanna do that?
No.
I think yes.
Can I ask a question about it, real quick?
Sure.
Is there a good time, knowing what you know, you and Sam, is there a good time in the year for us to have a workshop like that, when we're coming up on budget approval, budget renewal?
So I, I think this is actually a good time right now, in the month of April, because in May and early part of June, you'll be receiving your final amended budget for this year, as well as your first reading and look at next year's budget. So, anytime between now and then, we can squeeze in a time to just have a work session and talk about things, I, I think is, is most appropriate.
Can we look far enough out, like, like end April, maybe first part of May, instead of...
Absolutely, yeah, we, we don't have to do this next week.
No, it's not a question.
One of the things that was suggested... One of the things that was suggested by Dr. Brazington, we were unable to do it because you had a commitment, was to look at a date where we have a meeting, and go an hour in front of it, even if we brought something in, or we chipped in and got something to eat. But that, that we already have a committed evening, and possibly, we could all make, because we already are kind of making sure we're there. So maybe consider that as...
I would say that would be, um, very, very high on the...
Formality.
Because the fact that springtime is just, it's, it's going to be crazy. Everybody's been locked up.
So maybe we look at one of our existing board dates, either late April, or one of the, one of the two sessions in May?
Yeah, April and then October.
Okay, so we'll, we'll try and do it, first or second one in May.
Okay.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for bringing that up.
Is that it?
Good leader.
Meeting adjourned.